Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order for January 13th, 2025, this meeting of the King County Council Committee of the Whole. I am the Chair of the Committee. Claudia Balducci, I'd like to welcome you all here today. Thank you for joining us for this special meeting. We're here today because of a tragedy. We've lost a colleague and a great public servant, Sean Yim. Many of us, most of us, I think, on the council have attended a vigil and a memorial, and we've grieved with our brothers and sisters and siblings of ATU and the public. And now today, it's time to turn to action. One clear message that we heard is that as leaders of this county, this council has a key role and responsibility in making sure that safety is and will be the top priority of this county for our employees and for the public. And we must follow that commitment up with action. And that's why we're here today, is to start to do that. This is a special meeting of the Committee of the Whole and the first meeting in 2025. The topic, as I've alluded to, is transit safety and security. Our plan for the meeting today is to start off with a very brief briefing from central policy staff to set the context on Metro's work on safety and security functions, as well as the council's oversight role. We'll follow the staff briefing with a panel of representatives from the Amalgamated Transit Union, Local 587. And then when we've heard from them, we will turn to a management panel from King County Metro, King County Sheriff's Office, the Department of Human and Community Services, and our colleagues at Sound Transit. I just want to make a quick note for the record, and that is, we do actually have adopted rules that say that we don't usually allow signs. This is because of a relatively frequent flyer who likes to come and post signs. But today, I'm going to, without objection, waive that rule so that we can allow the sign of Mr. Yim to be here, which I think is important to have before us. All right, so let's go. And I'll ask the staff to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Barone, here. Councilmember Dombowski.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Mosqueda.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Up the Grove. Councilmember Von Reichbauer. Councilmember Von Reichbauer, I see you, but I can't hear you.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahalai.
Here.
Thank you. Chair Balducci, Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment. I am going to just proceed with the instructions. I assume we have people for public comment, yes? All right. So just briefly, the instruction for public comment. Public comment must be related to items on today's meeting agenda, which, as I said, are about transit safety and security. Public comment may not be used for the purpose of assisting a campaign for election of any person to any office, nor for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot proposition. It must not include obscene speech. If a speaker fails to abide by the restrictions, they may be ruled out of order and may be removed from the meeting. Each person will have two minutes to speak. And there's a timer on the podium for you to see that. When the time expires and the red light turns on, please wrap up your comments. You may finish your thought, but please do wrap up so the next person can speak. We're going to begin by calling on people who have signed up to speak in person, and then we'll turn to folks on Zoom. We are asking today if folks could use the podium to my left here so that we can show you on camera. If you stand over there, you won't have a camera shot. So, all right, let's begin by calling. Well, we'll get to Zoom after we get to... Is that okay?
Thank you, Chair Balducci.
Thank you.
Yes. The first person will be Patrick Brady.
Good morning. Madam Chair and council members. I'm Patrick Brady, an operator on the D Line, former treasurer of 587. I'm also the union coordinator of a new program. I think you've heard about Mentors Moving Metro, in which we support some dollars put in the 2025 budget. Thank you for that. I'm here to reflect on Friday's memorial service, which was organized by the local with attendance exceeding 3,000. And I'm assuming that all the council members attended. But if anyone didn't, then these remarks won't make sense. But the service itself is on YouTube, and I hope that people will watch it beginning to end. There are four points that were made at the memorial service that have really stayed with me. One is, the first is what President Woodfield said in his plea, specifically that action take place this year. It's one of many specific demands, but the clock is ticking. About 350 more days before the end of the year. The membership has high expectations of our president. And those expectations are being met. But we work against time and impatience. The second remark came from our international president, John Costa, who represented the International Union and reminded us that another driver had been shot in Atlanta just a few days before. His appeal was to politicians to do something. His exact words, "We need to pull together to stop this. Those in the room who want to make change, those in the room who want to represent their communities, those in the room who want our endorsements and ask us to vote, this is a time to do something." And the last remark came from the general manager, Michelle Allison, who spoke about her experience being there the morning of the murder. And she says, "I know it makes a big difference. Who stands with you, not just in the first days, but in the many days happening?"
If you had one more thought, you can please go ahead and wrap up.
I don't think any of us is surprised that the general manager would speak in such a way to make a promise that I will do anything I can do to make you safe. The reflection is what happened when I spoke to another member who was there and heard this. And her response was, "She's our leader."
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Jack Lorre.
Thank you, council members, for this opportunity. I've driven Metro buses for nearly 20 years and serve as the elected Chair of Atlantic Base Bus Operator Safety Committee. I'm here because Metro consistently puts service before operator safety, a choice that led to unthinkable consequences the morning of Sean's murder. I reported to work at 5:00 AM that morning. Metro required us to continue serving the same routes where Sean was killed, with no description of the suspect and no additional protection. How could Metro send operators alone into an area where an armed killer remained at large? Nearly a month has passed since Brother Sean's murder. Yet for operators, nothing has changed. It's business as usual. Keep the buses running, suck it up. My fellow operators are driving their routes right now in fear, traumatized by Metro's continued emphasis on service over safety. Our safety committee submitted a detailed action plan at Metro's request. It's been ignored. We operators face these dangers daily and know the solutions. Yet we have no authority to implement them. Council members, will you exercise your authority to address our immediate solutions? Will you empower operators to implement safety measures now, not months or years from now? Help us put safety over service before we lose another life. The time for action is now. Our lives depend on your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Jack Millman. I'm a Metro Transit operator out of North Base. I'm a security chairman. I've been driving for over 25 years, and mainly at nighttime. We're going to hear a lot of things that we need to make our jobs safer, everything from enclosures to... I want to talk about maybe if we can get better response time after 10 o'clock. I know we have crisis with law enforcement trying to respond to our calls. But even since Sean's death, we asked for police assistance at North Gate at nighttime. And the radio, our communications, told us they weren't available, period. And so, and this was very shocking. So, we need to address that. One thing I was wondering is, I know...
Yeah, it's my personal...
Can you pause the time? Councilmember Perry, can you mute, please? Can we get her muted?
Can we... You'll have extra time. I'll just manage it. Please go ahead.
Are we good? All right. Some of the things I think we can bring to the table, but we do have security at light rail stations all the way through the service. But it seems like we got two piles of beans that we can draw our money from. And so, I'd like to see if we can share some of the responsibilities at, like the light rail stations, have securities help clear our buses. And it shouldn't be just ours in King County or private security. We should be able to have anyone available. Because, like I said, after 10 o'clock, it's a ghost town in our outline areas, and it's just not safe for us drivers. I like the idea we're talking about de-escalation training. That is something that we all need to do, and that is very needed. It seems like we're being left out of that. Some of the new drivers are being trained, but some of us older drivers, it's just that information is gone. It's not available. Some of the things that can make it safer, we see downtown. I don't know if really anybody goes downtown 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. Just the other week, I drove the E Line through town. And, you know, we talk about 12th and Jackson being such a bad area, and the media has covered that immensely. But have you seen downtown? Have you seen Virginia Street? Have you seen Pike and Pine, James Street? You know, we stop, we open all doors. People come, just drop from doing their drugs and walk into the bus and either fall asleep or create an issue.
Thank you.
And there's no control.
Can you give us your last thought, please?
I'm glad we are all here today to address these issues. I got a whole list of issues that I'm going to bring up with our union president, which they already know most of them anyway. And hopefully, you guys can share the pain that we're dealing with to try and resolve all these issues.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pauline Van Sunis.
Hi, my name is Pauline Van Sunis. A lot of people know me as the Transit Fairy. And so I'm here also representing the Transit Riders Union and my fellow riders, because we're not the... Because our drivers are not the only ones who are affected by this, but riders too. 26 years ago, I could have been on the bus that fell off the Aurora Bridge because I rode that route the day before. I do believe that Seattle needs to think of, the Seattle area needs to think of itself not as a third world country or second class, but we can become world-class and safety is part of that. People see me do a lot of cleaning, and I have had positive... I've had positive feedback from SPD and from the community that cleaning up, especially around the bus stops, it seems to calm down the community. And the street people are less aggressive. And so, I'm hoping that maybe that can contribute to safety. But I just find it, we're not world-class if we can't be a safe community. And I'm, as a native kid, native-born kid, I really don't like where Seattle's going. So hopefully, some answers can be in the future. But riders need to be considered too. You guys might remember the last summer. I don't remember anything about this to this day, but they told me that I was sucker punched on Third Avenue at a bus stop. And I spent the rest of the day at Harborview Hospital. Fortunately, other than a black eye and a split in my, the bone in my cheek, I was not seriously injured, but I could have been very seriously injured. And that was a bus zone, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Joe Hasley. Oh, Hasler, I'm sorry, it's very hard to read the handwriting.
It's Joe Kunsler. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Bad Ash U T. Joe Kunsler here. Sorry, I'm just in my t-shirt today. As you, I want to start by saying that public transit is my limbs. It is my ability to get around. And after the murder of Sean Lim, you know, I've been a little more aware of security issues. And normally, I'm an open government guy. Normally, I'm an aviation journalist. That's why the Alaska Airlines t-shirt. And I just really want to underline the point today, and I appreciate Councilmember Jermaine having his camera on, that we need to have safety for everyone. We need to, I really appreciated the transit officers who were going through the King County Metro bus I saw this morning, making sure the home people sleeping were not using the bus as a shelter. It's not safe for them. It's not safe for anybody. We need to be housing the homeless. We need to be committing to public safety for everyone. And that means investing in law enforcement. That means backing the blue. That means backing the transit operators. Our public transit system should be ideally as safe as it is to get on an Alaska Airlines aircraft to go from point A to point B. Obviously, we can't have that because we need a TSA, Transportation Security 40. But we do need to understand that public transit is the disability community's limbs. Your mission is a disabled person who needs transit to get around. It's not woke. It's not, you know, defund the police. It is get person from point A to point B safely. I always thank my transit operators. I know how grateful and lucky I am to live here in the best country in the world and the best state in the union, that'd be Washington. And with all due respect to the last speaker, I think this is a first-class community. And you're about to hear from the flight attendants of the world's best airline, somewhat at my request, because I want to underline the point that we need to have safety for everyone in public transit so everyone can explore this great country. Thank you for your public service, as always.
Thank you. Next is Melinda, and I don't have a last name.
Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. I appreciate you having all of us here today. Public speaking is not my best forte. I'm better on a P A, talking to people on a plane. I would like to say that as a safety professional myself, along with my peers, on a daily basis, that's what we look for. You know, 9/11 was not that long ago. We protect our pilots. We protect our guests. We need to protect our metro people. I'm very emotional about this because safety is the top priority for anyone. We have to rely on our law enforcement. We don't have enough law enforcement to protect people. We need to look at that. We need to look at the metro. We have so many flight attendants that use the metro system. We have a social media page that they post on daily. And, you know, they're concerned for themselves and their welfare and the guests that are on there. Can you imagine how an operator feels when they're going through what they're going through on a daily basis? You know, it's just not people that are doing drugs. There's so many different people with mental issues. And you just don't know what's going on within someone's lives or what has triggered them that day. So, looking at the future, we would hope that we could get some type of safety for the operators that bring us to work on a daily basis, that transport other guests, transport little people, little ones going to school, you know? So, I just want to say, we really need to look at this as a safety issue and protect those that are taking us to and from our jobs daily. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. May I ask you to just state your name for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Melinda George Henderson. George J O R G E. I'm AFACWA Local 19, Seattle, and with Alaska Airlines. And these are my peers. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and what you said.
Thank you.
That's the last person in chambers.
All right. And do we have people online for public comment?
We do. We only have one person. Two, they raised their hand.
Very well. So just briefly, the rules for comment online are very much the same. The procedures are a little different. If you'd like to give public comment on Zoom, kindly use the raise hand function or press star six if you dialed in by phone. That will let us know that you are wanting to give comment. And then when you speak, please do say your name clearly so we can capture it for the record. Thank you so much. Please go ahead.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Une. I am a transit operator with Local 587. I've met many of you in person. And our conversation has always been around safety. Chair, I thank you for calling this meeting. What many people don't know is that the Chair and I were having a conversation last spring and talking about ways that we could move safety to the forefront. And as good as that was, it is not just a couple of well-meaning people with good intentions that can move this topic forward. This is a room full of very powerful influential people, and this is a good start. But again, this will not be fully solved here in this room. It takes the community at large. It takes us reaching out to other politicians and coming together, other influential people coming together. And then change will begin to happen. And it will be slow, and it will be arduous. But I thank you all for being here and to help make this change start.
Thank you. Next is Kelly. Can you please give us your full name?
Hello, my name is Kelly Reefer. I'm the executive director of Move Redmond. Transit safety is a critical issue for our organization. And everyone deserves safety on the job and to safely get where they are going. My friend and transportation expert, Dr. Adonia Lugo, writes about this space, about transit as a social space. It reflects the broader conditions of our society. And we have failed to provide a social safety net to so many members of our community. The duty of transit safety does not rest solely on the shoulders of King County Metro alone. It is critical to invest the resources needed to meet the scale of intersecting crises we are facing in our community of homelessness, mental health, and addiction. But there are steps that we can take to improve our material conditions today. Adding stronger barriers to protect drivers is one critical step. Investing in lighting. We've heard time and time again from transit riders that dark bus stops are very unwelcoming. We need to invest more in cleaning crews that show our transit hubs are cared-for spaces and offer additional eyes on the street. We also need to increase the frequency and reliability of our transit system as a whole, which will invite more riders and more people on the bus makes it safer for everyone. Finally, I've been inspired by Bart's Not One More Girl campaign, an initiative that promotes bystander intervention to eliminate sexual harassment on transit. We all have a duty to make our own communities safer. It isn't solely reliant on the duties of transit security or police officers. We all can take some collective ownership in keeping each other safe. While we cannot fix the whole larger systemic issues of a lack of a social safety net today, we can take meaningful steps to improve our current conditions for riders and transit operators. Thank you.
Chair Balducci, that's the last person that raised their hand by pushing star nine.
Thank you. I'll just pause for one quick second to make sure nobody else online is trying to give public testimony. Let's just wait one moment. Anyone else? Seeing anyone else? No? All right. With that, we will close public comment and move into our briefing for today. And we have with us Mary Bergenon from our central policy staff to set some context on metro safety and security functions and the council's oversight role. Welcome, Mary. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Balducci. For the record, I'm Mary Bergenon from the council staff. The materials for this item begin on page four of the committee packet. I want to start, first of all, by saying how very sorry I am to be addressing you in the wake of such a tragedy. I know that all of the council members have expressed their condolences to our metro colleagues and to the family of Sean Yim, and I want to join you in that. With that said, I won't be addressing last month's tragedy or next steps, but rather, as you said, Chair Balducci, setting the context. And I'll start on page five of the staff report by talking about what we mean when we talk about transit safety and security. And this may be familiar to many of you who have heard Rebecca Frankhauser, Metro's chief safety officer, speak. Transit safety and security are related, but they are different. Transit safety generally refers to preventing unintentional harm, such as from vehicle malfunctions or collisions, while transit security is understood to be preventing intentional harms, such as from assaults or disturbances. Obviously, today, we'll be talking about transit security, but both of those are regulated by the federal government and then overseen by the council. At the federal level, and I'm now in the middle of page five of the staff report, the Federal Transit Administration requires each transit agency to develop and regularly update a public transportation agency safety plan that includes data on incidents, mitigation plans, and an agency safety management system. In addition, agencies such as Metro report safety and security incidents through the National Transit Database. At the local level, the council functions as Metro's Board of Directors and provides oversight. And I'm going to just run through the roles that the council plays in transit safety and security. First, the council is required to certify by approving by motion Metro's regulatory compliance with federal regulations, doing that by approving Metro's public transit, transportation agency safety plans, the most recent of those you certified last year. Next, the council has budget oversight of Metro. And in recent years, at the executive's request, the council has approved additional funding to more than double the number of contracted transit security officers, from 70 in 2022 to 160 through 2025. The adopted budgets for '23, '24, and then for this coming year have also included funding for additional bus and bus stop cleaning, public restrooms at two major transit centers, behavioral health workers stationed in areas of concern, transit ambassadors in local communities, and social services support for people in need on buses or at transit stops. In addition to appropriating money, the council also provides requests and requirements at a policy level to Metro using the budget through budget provisos. And in recent years, council budget provisos have led to the development of Metro's Safety, Security, and Fair Enforcement, or SAFE Reform Initiative, which I'll discuss in a moment, as well as the placement of restrooms, additional bus stop and station cleaning, and outreach to communities in areas of concern. In addition, last year, the executive requested, and the council approved, a safety-focused restructure at Metro, creating the new Safety, Security, and Quality Assurance Division within Metro so that all of its safety and security functions could be grouped together, which Metro had argued would provide for more coordinated and focused work on these areas. Next, at a policy level, the council is responsible for oversight of Metro's adopted policy. As part of the strategic plan, the council has identified safety as one of the key goal areas and has identified three metrics: customer safety satisfaction, number of assaults and disturbances, and number of preventable collisions as performance measures to be tracked on Metro's online dashboard. And then finally, the council does require ongoing oversight and review through regular briefings and reports by metro leadership on safety and security issues. Now, moving into how transit security is currently structured, Metro has several different types of security functions. The first of those, and you'll hear more from them today, is Metro Transit Police, which is a division of the King County Sheriff's Office through a contract with Metro. So it's funded by Metro, not by the general fund. Metro Transit Police focuses its efforts on metro services in Seattle, South King County, North King County, and parts of unincorporated King County, patrolling buses, routes, bus shelters, park-and-ride lots, and undertaking investigations. Now, as with all local law enforcement, I think, both here and around the country, there are vacancies in this unit. Metro states currently there are 65 of 79 budgeted positions filled, with remaining shifts at this point filled by overtime. The next part of the security function, and I'm now in the middle of page seven of the staff report, are contracted transit security officers. These are contracted through a private... These are contracted through a private provider by Metro. As I noted, there were 70 transit security officers in 2022, have been increased over the last several years to currently about 160. These transit security officers, or TSOs, provide on-coach security on routes and in areas with the highest reported security incidents, as well as at terminal or last-stop security at locations of concern. And Metro has stated that the plan for 2025, at least as of late last year, was that the TSOs would ride bus routes with the highest rate of security incidents, currently Route 7, 36, and the ACDEF and H Rapid Ride Lines, as well as they would be stationed at the Aurora Village and Burian Transit Centers and continue to provide support at overnight bus terminals. In terms of fare enforcement, Metro had, prior to the pandemic, conducted fare enforcement on bus routes that allowed for off-board or backdoor payment. That was suspended during the pandemic, but will be starting up again this year in March, with enforcement beginning in May, with the idea that a rider could receive three written warnings and then would have to either perform public service, get a discounted transit card, or do some other type of action. And then finally, one of the newest initiatives is the Safety, Security, and Fair Enforcement, or SAFE Reform Initiative, which Metro developed in response to a council budget proviso of several years ago. The idea of SAFE is to provide more care and presence to people in need, as well as outreach to communities affected by transit safety and security issues. This has included a number of specific initiatives, including transit ambassadors, who are a team of Metro bus operators on light-duty service, who provide support and assistance to passengers and have been focusing in areas in Seattle that have been of high concern. And as well, the Behavioral Health Team, which is currently stationed at the Burian Transit Center to provide support and assistance to passengers in need. The 2025 budget includes additional funding for this team so that they will start riding the Rapid Ride CD and E-lines with transit security officers on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, as well as being stationed at the Burian Transit Center. So I will note that Metro has worked over the last year with communities in a number of areas of concern. The council heard a report on this last year. And in addition, Metro coordinates on an ongoing basis with Sound Transit and local jurisdictions. With Sound Transit, and you'll hear more about this in a minute, although Metro operates Sound Transit services under contract, Metro is not responsible for security or fare enforcement on Sound Transit services. That is something Sound Transit does itself. So those aspects are separate from what the county provides. And then in terms of local jurisdictions, the coordination is important because Metro has authority only for its facility. So on the buses, at the bases, at bus stops, and at transit centers, but not elsewhere. And so Metro relies on coordination with local police jurisdictions or with the Sheriff's Office in unincorporated King County for support. With that, I'll conclude my remarks, see if there are any questions, and then we'll have our panel.
Thank you so much for all that background. It's helpful to sort of level-set as we move into this next conversation. Members, any questions for Mary or comments? Councilmember Dembowski, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Balducci. Mary, thank you, and thank you for the good staff report and all the work you do. You reminded us that, I think, in 2021, '22 time period, there was, or I may be wrong in that, but we adjusted the Ride Right rules after a process that Metro engaged with, and they recommended those, and they were adopted. Can you generally summarize what the changes were there, the thrust behind those, and whether or not there's been any assessment, informal or formally, as to their effect on the rider and operator experience on our system?
So I'll let Metro speak to that in a little more detail. I will note that as part of the SAFE Reform Initiative, Metro worked with both internal stakeholders within Metro, as well as community members, to look at Metro's Transit Code of Conduct and to assess how people were being asked to ride and behave on transit and made a number of changes. I don't know that there has been any specific study done of how the rules correlate to behavior. I will note that Metro has been studying how additional transit security officers and more presence throughout the system has related to transit security incidents. And as you may recall from some of the work that Metro presented last year, security incidents had sort of peaked immediately, you know, in the early years of the pandemic, and had been going down. You know, not perhaps to the levels that council members or Metro would like to see, but had been steadily trending downward due to both the work and the additional investment. But I will let Metro speak in more detail, too, if they've done any kind of analysis about the Ride Right rules and transit behavior.
Anyone else at this time? Okay. Thank you, Mary. Let's move into our panels now. And first, I'd like to call up to the table officers of ATU Local 587. And we have joining us the President Greg Woodfill, Recording Secretary Paul Neal, Recording Secretary Latrell Gibson, and Vice President Jeff Stanbaugh. You're all welcome to come and join us here. Just in case you haven't done this before, it's hard to sometimes see when the microphone is on, but if you press the button, there's a red light that should light up, and then we'll hear you, and I'll, of course, let you know if we can't hear you. And just for those following along in the public, our goal here with the panels is really threefold. I'm hoping to hear what is being experienced. Obviously, we had this terrible incident, but I'd like to hear broadly what is going on out on the system from your point of view. So to inform us what is in process that we are doing, that we should continue doing or do more of, and what is not happening that needs to happen. And this will help inform the council for our future actions, and especially funding decisions, because that's a huge part of our role. So President Woodfill, if you'd like to kick off and sort of hand it off however you choose. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Greg Woodfill, President of ATU 587. I'm a proud 26-year Metro employee. I worked as a Metro Transit Operator for 13 years, driving the trolleys, driving the all-nighters. I worked as a first-line supervisor for 13 years after that. The last eight years, I worked in the Transit Control Center. I was elected in July. I would like to address the, start off, the changing of the Ride Right rules. We can change the rules all we want, but if we don't enforce them, what's the point? We're just talking about words. Latrell and I and Paul, when we started here and most of our career and for decades, if someone was a security issue, a problem, acting out on the bus, we would stop the bus, and we would call for professionals to come remove them. If they kept doing that, they would be trespassed from driving Metro. That doesn't happen anymore, and it needs to return. We have a public safety problem, not a transit problem. Our frontline transit employees suffer directly from the effects of not having enough resources to combat homelessness, mental illness, drug and alcohol abuse, and the resulting criminal activity in every city that we serve. Inevitably, those issues spill onto our transit system. Our members face the threat of assault daily. Far too often, they're slapped, punched, kicked, spit on, pepper sprayed, and overcome with fentanyl and other drug exposure. They see weapons brandished, and they have their lives threatened. You, as council members, won't hear about all of these. I, as a former Transit Control Coordinator, heard about them daily and increasingly over the last few years. Now, as union president, I get the calls in the middle of the night. We have lost order and safety on our transit systems, due in part to inadequate transit police staffing, policing policies, jurisdictional policies, jurisdictional finger-pointing and passing the buck, along with jail booking restrictions that have resulted in far few actually being held accountable for their actions on transit. Our Metro Transit Police Force, who serve us proudly and we appreciate, is one of the lowest-staffed in the nation for an agency of our size and has always been so. And in 26 years, my question is why? And how long are we going to continue like that? The county has just added 10 Metro Transit Police, what we call FTE slots, to bring our force, if fully staffed, from 79 to 89. Great, that's appreciated. That's a good start. But it only came as a reaction to our operators' brutal murder. And in reality, we need to more than double the transit police force to provide adequate safety and response times. And I can attest to that as a coordinator. Sometimes calls would take 15 or 20 minutes for someone to show up. You'll hear from Metro about the doubling of security guards up to 160. I thought it was 170. That's great. But these are contracted security guards that our members often see avoiding work or not doing their jobs. We need more of them riding buses and better monitoring of their performance. We need Sound Transit security to not be confined to the platforms, to be able to patrol the bus zones at all of the light rail stations that we are feeding the light rail. The passengers getting on light rail have to go through the gauntlet of these security issues before they get up to the platform. I'm told our average county jail population in November of 2024 is about 750 fewer prisoners than it was in the years pre-pandemic. We are at multi-decade lows in the local jail population despite rapid growth of King County in that time period. We have among the lowest per capita jail population in the country, significantly below peer cities. We're not pro-jailing people. We're pro-accountability for your actions on transit. While we appreciate the lifting of the ban on misdemeanor bookings in November, we need to do much, much more. Passengers know that they will face no consequences for their actions. They feel emboldened to act more aggressively to the point of routinely threatening operators' lives. As a Transit Control Coordinator, I can assure you that response times are far too long. Too many calls are handed off to jurisdictions that won't show up. In November, the University of Washington released a study on transit operators' second-hand exposure to rider drug use and the impacts on their well-being. 273 operators responded to this survey. 83% of them reported observing passengers using drugs aboard their vehicles. 35% reported passengers aboard their vehicle needing medical attention due to drug use. Operators reported being unsatisfied with their employer's response to the issue of passenger drug use aboard their vehicles and reported not being provided with guidance on what to do when a passenger used drugs aboard their vehicle. 64% of operators reported feeling health effects after observing passenger drug use, such as headaches and dizzy, lightheadedness. I will add, as I worked in the control center, we were told that this was all in their mind. As we had to report and take them to the hospital, our field staff, rates of stress among respondents were high, and the rates of anxiety and depression were higher than seen in other occupational populations. Half of the transit operators indicated a likelihood to leave their job within the next year. This was done in 2023 and concluded at the end of 2023. I could tell you the situation is a lot worse now. 21% of operators had depressive symptom scores indicating moderate depression. 25% of operators had anxiety scores indicating generalized anxiety disorder. We cannot afford not to act to restore order and safety in our transit systems. This region will not thrive and reach its full potential without continued investment in expanding safe public transit. We have invested billions of dollars in the transit systems that serve this county. The demographics and the next few decades will require us to invest billions more. If the public doesn't feel safe to use it, and you can't hire people to operate and maintain it, then these decades of investments will all be for naught. We must return to an expectation that passengers who create safety concerns will be removed and, if necessary, jailed and prosecuted. In the six months I've been in office, I've talked to many local politicians, from city councils all the way up to U.S. senators, calling for a regional task force on transit safety. Our union cannot wait any longer. We feel like we are alone in fighting for passenger and employee safety. We will start the task force and invite all of the stakeholders in this county. We appreciate what Metro is doing, what our police officers are doing, but this issue is bigger than Metro. It must be tackled jointly by all of the cities in King County, along with Metro, Sound Transit, and the county. Each mayor and police chief should commit to and be held accountable for the safety of their transit centers and zones. Their police force should be allowed to board and check on passengers' safety and follow coaches as determined, as was done many years when we were operating coaches. It's their citizens that can't safely use bus zones or transit centers in their community. I can tell you, in the Transit Control Center now, when we get a call of a bus zone that drug and alcohol use and weapons are there, and senior citizens can't go use that bus zone, a lot of times, we won't even call, because we know no one will come. Metro has committed to retrofitting its fleet to fully enclose the operator compartments, just like Los Angeles finished doing. They've also committed to hiring more transit police and security and providing more training. These commitments are a good start, but will require funding, and those measures alone will not be enough without the county and its cities doing more to address the underlying problem of public safety. We must establish a formula for any future transit service expansion where a percentage of each dollar invested in service expansion goes towards transit safety. If we don't have enough resources now for transit safety, how can we expand service? We call on the county to reassess the timeline for converting the bus fleet to full electrification. We feel we could use some of those funds for transit safety now. A fleet of all-electric buses that no one uses will not help climate change. Getting more people out of their cars by expanding safe transit is just as beneficial as rapidly electrifying the fleet. We call for a full assessment of Metro's and Sound Transit's administrative staffing levels and cost. Over the last few decades, we have witnessed an explosion of management staffing. Every reorganization ends up with more staff supporting more upper management. If we can't find funding for transit safety or expansion, cuts should be looked for in Metro's seemingly bloated bureaucracy. We are the public servants who provide critical transit service. We are not politicians or transit management. We shouldn't be responsible for our own protection and the protection of our passengers. King County has an absolute responsibility for the safety of their employees. King County, jointly with its cities, is responsible for the safety of its citizens while using public transit. We call for all parties to work together on this public safety issue, which is not strictly a transit issue. We demand action and solutions rather than the current finger-pointing, passing the buck, inaction, hands-in-the-air, and head-in-the-sand approach that we've witnessed for far too long. We will not sit idly by any longer while our members and your employees are assaulted and are suffering from PTSD and anxiety from unsafe working conditions and are brutally murdered. Literally, for our own survival, we won't hesitate to use the press to call out we won't hesitate to use the press to call out inaction and lip service when we see it. We won't hesitate to activate the public to pressure their leaders to do better if need be. Every transit worker knew and regularly said that nothing would get done until another one of us was murdered. We all knew this day was coming. So here we are, where we all knew we would be. Please act now. Do something to help prevent another public servant, transit employee, from being brutally murdered like our beloved brother, Shanyan. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Who would like to speak next?
Latrell, would you like to speak?
Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. Latrell Gibson, HU Local 587 Recording Secretary. I would like to speak on operator's safety and the job of the operator. So, as operators are trying to maintain a safe environment for the public and themselves, a lot of operators are getting disciplined for passing up bus stops where they see active drug use and are not inviting that on the bus. And this needs to be addressed. How are operators supposed to be safe and operate safely if they're constantly worried about getting punished or disciplined or losing their job because they're trying to prevent being exposed to open drug use and exposing their passengers that need the bus, that are riding right, that are following the code of conduct, from exposing them to the same dangers? It feels that we cater to the lawlessness and people that don't want to follow the rules, that we're not catering to the passengers and the operators who are there to work and the passengers that are there to use the bus for as a tenant purpose and get to and from where they need to go. They're being punished, as well as the operators. And I'm seeing that this is a continued culture within King County. And we have been screaming since I've been operating a bus for 23 years now. And in that 23 years, I have seen my job going from, I'm able to get what I need if I have a passenger or any type of issue on my coach. I'm able to get help that I need. I was supported. I felt that I had the support that was needed. Now, fast forward to now, there's no support. Operators are out here on their own, literally, on their own, with no support. If you do anything, you're going to get disciplined. And that culture needs to end. We need, the operators need, support from our leaders. We need to support from upper management. We need support from everyone so that we can operate safely. This is a joint effort. But when they're all out there, when operators are out there on their own with zero support, we don't get the result that we need, which is safe, which is safety. Everybody, every person deserves to return home the way they left, alive. None of us go to work not expecting to come back home. And we shouldn't. But that is the fear that so many have because they see the lawlessness. They see that nothing's going to happen. You're attacked. Who's going to come save us? Who's going to come to my rescue or a passenger's rescue? You're sitting there waiting for help, waiting for help. Even times when you have issues on your bus, you're told to allow the person to stay on the bus. What kind of world allows the problem to stay on the bus? All the upper management folks, you folks work in the locked office. You're in a security, you have to get badges to get through any door here. Bus drivers open their door to who knows what every day. You open your door to the public. And what we need is the same protections, or to say, at least the same support and protections that are offered to everyone who works for King County. And that needs to, those folks that work for King County need to put themselves in the shoes of operators who don't have those protections that they have. What it's like to be behind a wheel and don't know what is going to happen. And we're always fighting mental illness. Mental health is a big issue out here. A lot of people self-medicate by using drugs. And there's no operator's going to be able to really be trained on how to address that. Mental illness comes in all shades, all forms. I don't know what mental illness I'm going to be looking at when the doors open and they get on. I'm not going to know how to diffuse that because I'm not a mental health expert. I don't work in that field. I don't know. It's really hard to train on something like that. So, it's really what we need is the support. If we have an issue, if we don't know how to deal with it, and we call in and say, "We have this problem. We need this person off the bus." They're creating a safety issue where I can't operate safely. I'm operating a 30-ton vehicle with a lot of lives around me and on the bus. I shouldn't be told to continue on when I've said that this situation is happening. I shouldn't be forced to say, "Well, let these people stay on the bus to the end of the terminal and we'll deal with it if we can," or "Bring them backwards. Just let them stay on all day." That is not the purpose of transit. Transit, Metro has three S's: safety, service, and schedule. Safety is never number one. All operators say that. Safety hasn't been number one for a very long time. And we need to make safety number one. Safety is not disciplining operators because they feel you didn't do something safe. Safety is supporting the operators, supporting everyone that's out there on the ground, our cleaners, our maintainers, everyone that's out there having to experience the public. We all need safety together.
Thank you very much, Secretary Gibson.
Before turning it over to Paul, I would like to say that safety, our frontline transit workers are the only ones held accountable for safety. They're the only ones. Nobody above them is held accountable for safety. I just want to add that.
You're on.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Paul Neal, I'm the Financial Secretary of AT 587. I'm also a 41-year employee of Metro Transit. I drove for 13 years. I was assaulted three times during that period. Punch, jabbed, and put in a hammerlock. I was promoted to supervision. I've responded to numerous security incidents over the years. I can tell you from my own observation that this security situation on the buses has deteriorated markedly, particularly in the last 10 years with the opioid epidemic and the resulting behavioral problems. And I do want to thank all of you for coming down to the service on Friday. It meant a lot to our members. But just as a little illustration of how pervasive the violence is, we have a group, it's called our COPE Committee, Committee on Political Education. There are rank-and-file members. There's five of them. Usually, three or four of them are operators and we have at least one mechanic on there at any one time. In the last three months, two of those four operators were assaulted. One had to be relieved because of, they'd been assaulted before. They had another trauma. It was fortunately just a death threat. The other one was hit in the head with a bottle. He's been out for two months. You know, 20, 30 staples and stitches and so forth. But that's just one group of, I think, above-average operators who've been around for quite a while, who have pretty good people skills. And this is what's happening to them. And also, I just want to state that the passengers don't even have the protection of having that radio by them or the perceived power of that uniform. And so, they're also suffering. So, we need to make sure everybody's safe on transit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else you'd all like to add? Please, go ahead. Welcome.
Jeff Stanbaugh, Vice President of Maintenance. I represent the maintenance folks for 587. One of the things I'd like to reiterate, it's been said quietly, but I would like to make sure that everybody realizes this problem doesn't run around just on the buses. It starts in the zones. Our facilities folks are out there trying to clean the bus zones. The drug use is in the zones. The homeless are in the zones. And it makes it impossible for our facilities folks to actually clean the zones. That being said, when you have those dirty facilities, the folks don't want to get on the bus. They come up to the zone, they see the zone, and for whatever reason, they continue on their way without getting on the bus because they don't want to wait in that environment. And it starts in the transit zones. And until we realize the problem is not just on the bus, it's around the bus and it's throughout the city. Greg has said it, Paul has said it, Latrell has said it. It's throughout the county. And until we recognize it's not just a transit bus problem, it's a transit system problem, including the zones and the facilities, until we get those cleaned up, we're not going to recover.
Thank you so much. Anything to close?
Yeah, I'd like to close by thanking you all for calling this meeting and the chair. It's much appreciated. We do know how many of the council members support us, but we do need your action and we can't wait any longer. Please, help our members. We have 4,500 members and they desperately need your help.
Thank you all so much for being here today. I hope you can stay and hear from the rest of us. Oh, would you entertain questions? Sorry, Councilmember. Please go ahead, Councilmember Dombrowski. Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Chair. Just, you know, we have folks who are on the front lines here presenting and I just think we should take the opportunity, if folks want to, to ask them questions. I'm looking at Metro Transit's dashboard on safety and they report for 2024 assaults and disturbances, two different categories. They reported, by my count, a total of 12 assaults in all of 2024 on the system. Do you believe that is accurate?
No, I don't believe all assaults are reported. That's been the history that I've seen over 26 years. So, no, I don't believe that. And all of the other statistics on that dashboard, unfortunately, our operators, a large part, have checked out to reporting anything. As much as we try to encourage them because we need the cumulative stats so that we can get more resources, we understand that, but our operators have had enough. They think it's a waste of time. They don't see any action out of that. And it's been that way for decades. So, it's great. We keep all the statistics and that dashboard is great. But I'm here to tell you, everything on that dashboard is a fraction of what's actually occurring.
And I would also like to, you know, piggyback off of what Greg said. Yeah, those numbers are greater than what's reported. A lot of operators are out here seeing that there's no action being taken. You get assaulted or any thing and you have an issue on your bus, you have someone removed, the next day, they're back on your bus. They see no action is ever taken. The passengers that commit these assaults don't do any jail time. They're not removed from Metro services. They're allowed to continue to ride. And so, when an assault happens, operators are just like, "Well, what's the point in doing this? Nothing's going to happen. Nothing's going to change." And so, in order for us to get, for you guys to get that data that you need, there has to be change. Operators need to see that something is going to happen, that these people will be held accountable, that the operators and even the public will get the justice that they deserve in the wake of these assaults. Until that happens, people are going to just turn a blind eye because there's nothing that's being done to address the situation.
Just another comment with question. We have our operators in charge of a piece of equipment that costs probably well north of $1 million. And it's a semi-public space. Public comes onto it. I view our operators as managers of their job site. Do your operators feel that they are empowered to manage their job site? And I'm hearing perhaps that they'd like a little more authority. Can you give us any more specifics on that if that's the case?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We have, and I've witnessed this, we've all witnessed this. We have gone to a culture of blaming and shaming the operators and discipling the operators for their own assaults, for their own actions of trying to control the bus. We have got it down to where, "Don't ask anything about the fare. Don't talk to people. Just be a robot and drive your bus for eight, 10, 12 hours a day." The millions of good things they do throughout the day are not acknowledged. If they had a bad day, they're a little grouchy, said the wrong thing. It escalates into assault. The tape will be rolled, frame by frame, every second, and we will look to find a way to blame it on that operator and discipline that operator for their own assault. For what was a conscious choice to make a criminal action of assault will now be blamed on our operators. No, I appreciate that question. We do not feel that we have any control over managing the bus and we are trained and told not to.
Final question, if I might, Chair Belducci. Some systems around the country, including BART in San Francisco and the New York system, have had periods of time where they will surge enforcement of the rules. We're going to have a period of time where we are going to have a strict enforcement, to kind of, if you will, reset the system, the expectations of the public on it. Do you feel that an initiative similar to that here might be of some value or benefit?
We desperately need that. We desperately need that. Like I say, nobody feels that there are any consequences. I don't think this population that has mental issues and dealing with drugs, I don't think it's that large. If we could just, that's why we talk about utilizing the empty jail spaces, taking them off the coach. Because if we can control, if we can get some more control, that will have a good effect. So, yes, surging, doing anything like that where the public sees that there is some consequences for acting out on a bus will have a significant effect, I believe.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Belducci.
Thank you. We have some council members online who have their hands raised. I'll call on Councilmember Dunn first. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Belducci, for that. I want to thank you for having this hearing. It's very important and very well timed. The panel of the day is doing a really good job, I think, articulating the safety issues for the drivers out there. And I want them to know that these concerns are not being shot out in the Ethernet, not being listened to. They are being listened to. I am particularly interested in a number of things that were said today, but the suggested regional task force on transit safety is an excellent idea. So, while we've all been talking here, we are currently in my office drafting legislation to introduce that, to call on the executive to pull together a task force, which will include all of you, if you're interested, who are speaking today. So, I think that's a good place to start, to hear in more detail what is happening here. Councilmember Dombrowski's gestured in the direction of an enforcement initiative, which we do see across the country in departments that are, you know, doing a good job protecting their riders, a zero-tolerance policy for, you know, attacking or assaulting or even threatening a driver. I mean, we should treat transit operators just like a federal judge or a United States Senator or President of the United States, for that matter. If you're attacked or threatened, that individual's going to go to jail, period. Zero tolerance. Put it on billboard advertising. Put it on the signs in the buses up above. Make it very clear. And then, when it happens, sadly, you prosecute the hell out of it and you promote that aggressively. And so, that nobody touches those transit operators. Man, it is, it needs to happen. So, that transit thing will be introduced today a little bit and I welcome any cosponsors on it. It's just a shame. I watched the city of Seattle pursue it, defund, disarm, and disparage the police to the point now there are hundreds of police officers in Seattle that are gone. They've left. And, you know, somebody steps out of the streets of Seattle, three feet on into Metro Bus, and somehow now it's just Metro's responsibility. The city is... The city of Seattle needs to get their act together and fund their law enforcement, and get back to keeping the broader community safe. There's a lot of things we got to do. But your concerns are heard, we'll continue to work with you, and we don't want you to go away, and we thank you for your being here very much.
There really wasn't a question, but if you'd like to react, feel free. You're on now.
Yeah, I just would like to point out, we can't focus on Seattle, and Seattle needs to be focused on, but every city we go through doesn't get a free pass and a free ride. We can't be expected to, Metro can't be expected to patrol and keep public safety for all of these bus zones and transit centers throughout the county. Now, we're calling for that initiative. If you're going to call and get someone, I'm just asking that we be brought to the table. We're the ones that actually can tell you what's happening out there, and we're left out of the conversation. So, we're your, we're your eyes and ears, and we should be at the table for any of this, because we're the source experts exactly what's going on.
Yeah, and you will be, you'll be front and center, and you or whoever designates. And you're right, every city should be responsible, to a certain degree, for, you know, policing their agencies, and no one should be let off the hook, and, you know, you want to solve this problem, it's got to be a true partnership. Town Transit's got to step up to the plate. They cherry picked all the great routes years ago. They need to be responsible for some of the existing transit service. The cities need to be, especially where the crime is happening. I mean, that's very, very important. And the other problem is, you know, here we are, we can deploy resources, we can deploy, you know, deputy sheriffs in the Transit Division to supply much-needed service, which I've supported for years, but that, those resources are coming right out of the unincorporated areas of King County. And that's not really where this is happening, by and large, except for some of the places like White Center and other places. But anyway, there's a long way to go here, which is why that regional task force is interesting, because it has that multi-jurisdictional solution. So, I like it, I'd like to roll with it, and we'd like to have you on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Zahale.
Thank you, Chair Balducci. Thank you all so much for coming and sharing such powerful solutions with us. I heard several things from, you know, promoting a regional safety task force, to reserving a portion of any service expansion for security purposes, more accountability for offenders. Would each of you mind just sharing, if you had one top priority of the solutions that you mentioned, which it would be? I know all of them need to be pursued aggressively, but just to get a sense of priority for, if there is one thing that you think that we all need to be going toward with aggressiveness out of the list that you shared, would, I don't know if all three of you have the same one, but if you could share either each of you one, or share one that's aligned across all of you, that would be very helpful in terms of prioritizing.
This won't solve our public safety issues, but enclose the operators compartment now, please, enclose that compartment. I can't stress that enough. We need to start with that. Let's protect our operators as we look at the solutions for the greater issues that need to be solved. That would be mine.
Thank you, Greg.
Mine would be supporting the operators by holding the offenders accountable.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to add?
Thank you, Ron.
Yes, much more law enforcement to back up the drivers and clean up the nonsense.
I want to note for the record that there are folks in the audience who also have ideas and encourage you to send them to us, please. We typically just speak to the panelists, but please feel free to send them in an email. We're going to collect all of this and follow up after, okay? Thank you. All right, before we move on, let me just reflect back, a lot of what I've heard is going to require action at different levels of government. Certainly, we would have a role in resource allocation. I want to thank you for giving thought to where resources could come from. Quite often, people say to us, we need this, we need that, and it's left to us, how do we fund that sort of thing? You had some very good ideas about the how of it, I appreciate that. I want to share just super briefly, I am a lifelong transit rider. I have been getting to work on your buses, and less frequently on trains, because they don't really go where I am yet. And recently, I had an experience that I think is how things ought to start to work. Got on a train, it was running late, so it was packed, and I was so excited, I found a seat, and then I realized that the reason there was a seat was because I was knee to knee with a couple of guys who were smoking something. And one of them was passed out, and the other one was having a good time. By the next stop, somebody came from security. By the second stop, they were gone, and there was, and the security staff stayed around and made sure everything was okay before they got back off onto the platform. This is how things ought to work. When somebody calls, there's a problem, somebody shows up quickly and manages it, and then the message that will be sent is, this is not a safe space for you to come and break the rules, or to do drugs, or whatever, and people will choose to be elsewhere. And that's how, I think, how we start to move threatening scary behavior off of transit. I can't stress enough what many of you have said, and many people have said in the last weeks and prior, we're not going to solve transit safety alone. Public transit is part of the public realm, and we have to address what's going on in the public realm, or we will never solve what's going on in transit, because there's just too many buses, too many places, and so we need to focus with our partners in law enforcement at the cities, all of that needs to come around, these solutions. So, thank you for this conversation. I hope it's an opening conversation, and that we keep the urgency on. That, to me, is what that sign says. We cannot forget, we cannot let up off the gas on this issue. We need to push forward very, very aggressively. And so, I'd love to now turn to our management folks and have them come up and share similarly, what are they experiencing, what are they working on, and what do we still need to do? So, thank you all so, so much for spending your time here with us today, for sharing actionable suggestions that we will take up. Now, I'm going to invite up Michelle Allison, the General Manager of King County Metro, Patty Coltindle, the Sheriff of King County, Kelly Ryder, the Director of our King County Department of Community and Human Services, and Russ Arnold, who is the Chief Service Delivery Officer, Deputy CEO at Sound Transit. And I just want to mention for the record that I know Sound Transit CEO, Jaron Sparman, was with us for a while, but unfortunately, had a thing he had to go to, so he couldn't stay. But I know he came and wants to very much be part of this conversation, because you are our regional transit agency, and we all work together. I think, Michelle, if that's okay, Director Allison, can I call on you first? Of course. Thank you so much for being here today.
Yeah, thank you for having us here, and thank you for such a powerful introduction to the conversation. I just want to also start by recognizing that at Metro, our frontline workforce is the reason we exist. We at Metro are here to provide public service, and we do that through our operators, our vehicle maintenance staff, our facilities workers who tend to the stations, our past sales office. The only way Metro works is through our frontline workforce. And so, their needs are very much our priority, and their safety is very much front and center in our frame for how we make decisions. And I will just say, as the General Manager, we recognize where we are now is not where we need to be. And our operators, and everyone who works to serve the public, deserves more investment. So, I'm going to walk through what we are doing, but just recognizing the moment that we are in, it feels incredibly unsatisfying when you know you need more, and you're still talking about what you're doing, because we also are proud of what we're doing, too. So, I'm holding that tension today, and just appreciating the discussion and the experience of those who are providing the service for the people of King County. So, at Metro, our target for incidents is always zero. It is our goal to ensure that every transit journey is safe and welcoming, whether you are working and providing that service, or you're riding. A single incident is too many, and the tragic loss of Shanyam is a reminder that, again, we need to do more. So, Metro will continue to do what we can to change the conditions that lead to the incidence of violence on our system. We're going to continue to protect our employees and our riders, and we know we can't do it alone, and so we will continue to strengthen our partnerships. We do not simply have a transit problem that has been said, we have a public safety one. What happens in our communities also happens onboard our service. We are eager to collaborate with ATU to do our part, and we've appreciated the productive and constructive conversations we've been having with them over the past couple of weeks, and look to do more. Over the last several years, we've engaged with thousands of riders and employees who've participated in our Safety, Security, and Fair Enforcement Initiative that's been referenced today. They've asked for more visible presence on our system, and that comes in a lot of different forms, so I'll unpack that a little bit, of how we are defining that. This engagement and our research on our customers' perceptions has helped us orient our work as an agency. We know that presence, care, cleanliness, and reliable service are the most important indicators for satisfaction of both our employees and our riders. It's a shared list of priorities. So, now that we have that information, we're working to respond to it as urgently as possible. To deter and respond to security challenges, Metro has more than doubled the number of transit security officers, as you heard through Mary's Good Report. We've expanded their areas and their routes using data that we have to really target our resource allocation to the need of that system. We've also moved to 24/7 coverage of our system and our bases. It's also very important for our employees to see safety and security at the work sites. We've partnered with DCHS to pilot a behavioral health support team, and through thousands of engagements this year, that team has offered cold weather supplies, connection to community partners, de-escalation interventions, food, hygiene items, and shelter referrals. Since the launch of that program, that team has needed to request the police very limited times, only three, during its 4,500 contacts and 213 crisis response and de-escalation events. What that shows us is that you can work upstream to get in front of something that could become a problem on your bus. We've also launched our Metro Safety Ambassadors. These are friendly folks in blue jackets that really have a customer service approach, but they're also there to ask the operators if they're okay. They greet riders, they provide support at locations, and again, they provide presence. There's a uniform nature to their work. They are in charge. They look as a credible person who's there to help support if there needs some assistance. We've also increased our care and presence, and we have seen that this targeted approach has led to a decrease in unlawful transit activity. Two examples: Bayonne Transit Center. We received lots of reports, both from riders and our operators, about the Bayonne Transit Center. So, we've targeted that for both transit security officers, ambassadors, and our behavioral health teams. The incidents have decreased about 45% from the same time in the previous year. Also, at Aurora Village, the incidents were down around 48%. And as noted from the previous panel, we need people to report. The data is only as good as the people reporting it, so we'll always continue to find ways to make sure that the experience of our riders and our operators matches the data that we have. To improve the cleanliness of our vehicles and stops, Metro Facilities and Vehicle Maintenance Teams have increased their staffing levels to clean every bus and shelter more regularly. We have a new way for customers to report where things are amiss, which allows us to target that and clean it up faster. I know if I see an overflow garbage can, or a light that doesn't work, or a panel that's out, and I see it time and time again, it leaves me with the impression that that space isn't tended to. If I see it one day and come back the next, and it's tended to, I know that someone's been there. That's a powerful form of presence. Cleanliness and safety are incredibly related. To better coordinate across all sectors, as we've talked about in the public realm, we've addressed or created a Metro Safety Emphasis Coordination Team. This works with our local jurisdictions, internal organizations to Metro, our safety and security partners externally with transit police divisions, and local police authorities to help identify where challenging areas are, and to really provide a tailored solution for that. Again, to disrupt that behavior so it doesn't get on the system. We would like it to make it very uncomfortable to misbehave on transit, that our code of conduct is upheld, so people know it's not worth it to break it. Together with our Safety Emphasis Coordination Teams, we collaborate with city partners and other organizations to deploy the resources to address the physical conditions of transit areas, and provide the appropriate forms of presence. Someone mentioned in the comment, which is very true, lighting, your access to and from those locations. We know that some seemingly simple things can really disrupt unwanted behavior and support our operators and our riders. Together, this team has been active in coordination efforts on Third Avenue in downtown Seattle, 12th and Jackson, and other locations across the county, where we have heightened concerns about unsafe or illegal activity near transit stops. To set clear expectations for behavior onboard our service, we've updated our code of conduct in partnership with the community. These new signs are easier to understand, more visual, and multilingual. So, it was mentioned before in a question from the council member, the transit code of conduct is a legally binding way that we can hold people accountable to how you behave on our system. Previously, we had a very long list, and they were all held equal: listening to music, eating, harassing an operator. What we've done now is highlighted the top ones that we think are the most important to the system, rebranded them, created some language translation, and putting them back out onto the system to show that your behavior matters, and we will hold you accountable to it. I think the really important part of the conversation today is, how do you have an expectation and hold someone accountable to that expectation? Our code of conduct is our way of saying, this is our expectation for how you engage with the system. We also do have a trespassing ordinance and a way that we can really empower MTP to trespass folks, should they indeed not be, or be persistently not engaging in the way that we would want. That is an available tool for us. To better care for our employees, we've created mandatory de-escalation training, which is noted, has been readjusted in our training program, so every new officer and operator is getting that training as they're being onboarded, and we are working through our whole system in order to ensure that every employee has received that training. Currently, we are 37%. So, we have some work to do, and we will put that at the top of the list to be able to keep reporting out our accomplishments on that. We've made it easier for employees to report safety and security incidents, and have resources dedicated to reviewing every report. So, while we may not be able to change that condition immediately, every day, we are looking at that data, both internally with our safety and security folks, and with our Metro Transit Police, to better understand where we are receiving, what kind of challenge in our system, to deploy that resource. All people leaders at Metro are in the process of receiving trauma-informed care for our supervisors. This is Metro's really important way of acknowledging that we have a workforce that needs to be cared for, too. So, if there is a traumatic incident, and an operator is nervous or has been re-traumatized from a previous event, we want their management to understand how to care for them through that moment, to meet them where they're at, to give them the resources to call in, making life easier, or the other myriad of supports that King County has, because we know mental health is really just as important as physical health. So, we're trying to get all of our people leaders into that same frame of support. While the overall trends of safety and security are going down since their height during the pandemic, the recent murder of our colleague is unacceptable, and it should never have happened. It's a stark reminder that we will always have more to do. These past several weeks, we have pledged, as an organization, bold targets. We've added 10 more deputies to our Metro Transit Police contract, and we're incredibly grateful for the Sheriff's Office's support to recruit and retain our valuable MTP workforce. We also appreciate the Sheriff's Office offering overtime to increase operator presence overnight and on transit. Part of the system that I will speak to, and the role that I have, is frustration that oftentimes, our newest operators are on the hardest routes with the least amount of support, because it's usually overnight, when things are closed, there's less presence around the system. So, there's continued work to do with ATU, because that's how we deploy our operations through that frame. We need to address that. We'll be reinstituting fair inspection and enforcement in the coming months, as has been noted, and we are seeing success with Operation Safe Transit, which you will hear more about from the Sheriff's Office. This effort has been an incredibly impactful way to show the power of partnership and collaboration to move the needle on a priority of safety. We have been working on a shield or bus separator compartment for a decade. This has been a very real conversation in transit across the region. It has been hard, because there's no perfect solution. We have to balance weight, ADA, you're changing the actual office of an operator, so there's a lot of opinion about how it should work and function and feel. And so, now's the time for us to make a choice. We have two prototypes on our system. We have two prototypes on our system that we'll be working with ATU to encourage operators to test out, and there is no perfect option, but we will make a choice, and we will start investing it this year into the new coaches that are coming and work on a retrofit plan. Additionally, we've placed an order with a bus manufacturer on four test buses that will feature an ADA-compliant, European-style operator compartment design. This design is very similar to light rail, streetcar, or subways, and we're working with other manufacturers in the industry for them to adopt similar design structures. In the reality, there's only so much that Metro can do alone. Buses like our sidewalks are vital public spaces, and they face many of the same safety challenges we've seen in the communities that they serve. We welcome ATU to the active discussions with cities, law enforcements, and other regional partners that we've been having around security challenges and the communities on the street where Metro provides service. We look forward to participating in the regional task force that's been discussed today because we know that public safety will only be addressed when we work together. When cities, law enforcement, housing, health providers, and our court systems coordinate our investments, things like lighting, sidewalks, and other infrastructures and services will deter crime, help hold people accountable for illegal activity, and connect people with the resources they need upstream. I said it on Friday, and I will say it again: When our communities are safe, transit will be safe, and that's our collective responsibility.
Thank you so much, Director Allison. If I may, I'd like to next call on Sheriff Cole Tindall. Thank you so much for being here and for staying and hearing from the former panel. I think it was important that we all heard that, and I look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Balducci. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and being invited. I am King County Sheriff Patty Cole Tindall, and I am responsible for operations at the King County Sheriff's Office. That includes 12 contract cities, two transit organizations, which I will talk about, the King County Airport, as well as the Muckleshoot Tribe. So we cover 2,300 square miles here in King County. That includes both our deputies that work as contract police in cities and our unincorporated areas. So in this role, I oversee the two transit contracts, one being Metro, the other being Sound Transit. Important is to differentiate what type of service these contracts are. These are considered enhanced police models. What that means is they are not primary police. So when there is a certain crime that might happen on the line, it is that city that is responsible for doing the investigation, such as with the homicide of bus operator Yim. That's why the Seattle Police Department investigated that homicide. So our deputies who work at Sound and Metro, they address problem locations, crimes that are impacting the system. But again, if there is a major crime that occurs in a city, it is that city that would investigate the crime. So in terms of staffing, at the end of 2024, Metro, we had about 82% staffing. What that means is we had 79 FTEs, and as Director Allison noted, we have another 10 that have been added, so that will make 89. But we are only 82% staffed. And then at Sound Transit, that's a 77% staffed. So we have some vacancies, but important to note is we have vacancies in our entire agency. So any hiring that we do would hopefully impact the entire Sheriff's Office because we are short everywhere. So just to note, a comparable transit agency to Sound Transit, let's use that as an example, would be BART Police Department, which you're familiar with, BART down in California. They have 225 officers, but they are a primary police agency, so they take care of everything that happens on that line. So they answer 911 calls and all crimes on the system. I just wanted to mention that to show that both Metro and Sound, their numbers for staffing are not comparable to another system in the country. So in terms of what is working, both locally and regionally and nationally, I'll start with regionally. I'm very proud of Operation Safe Transit. This is a collaboration between the King County Sheriff's Office in conjunction with Metro Transit, Sound Transit, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, DAJD, the jail, and the King County Executive's Office. Important to note is that the executive opened up jail bookings for the Sheriff's Office for misdemeanors specifically for Operation Safe Transit. This started May 1st, where we worked to address crime that was happening in and around the transit system. So we are still working. Operation Safe Transit is still operational. It offered a backstop, diversion, co-response, and security measures put in place by Metro and Sound Transit. It allows for bookings for individuals who are creating an unsafe or an illegal environment in the transit system. So it gave deputies an opportunity to take somebody to jail if they weren't going to comply with the rules of riding. Program, like I said, encourages our deputies to get out at the stations, the light rail and buses, and to make contact with people who are engaging in illegal or inappropriate behavior. We call those on-views, where they actually see things in progress rather than being called on a 911 call for service. So it's a shift. It's getting out, seeing what is happening, and addressing that immediately. So we are trying to interdict crimes before they become more serious. So on the national level, Seattle has hosted a number of large events that the King County Sheriff's Transit deputies have supported. That support includes crowd management, terrorism prevention, and crime suppression. Some highlighted events that were extremely successful: the MLB All-Star Game, the Taylor Swift concerts, Seahawk Games, and many more. The two transit police contracts utilize regional and national intelligence, best practices related to deployments, and vast experience with handling these large events. So these are some of the things that we have been doing locally, but also I see this more on a national level, that we have some experience. And we have FIFA coming up, not only later this summer with the club games, but next year with the actual cup games. So in terms of gaps that we have identified and things we should be taking away from the recent tragedy so that we can do better in the future, first and foremost is staffing. We need a fully-staffed King County Sheriff's Office and a fully-staffed police transit contracts. We have shown that emphasis work and programs like Operation Safe Transit, they actually work. We actually see results. Our limitation is our transit police contracts, they're not fully staffed. Additionally, even at full staffing, our numbers of FTEs are very low, as I mentioned, compared to other transit law enforcement agencies across the country. We are taking initial steps to address this shortage. Last week, we signed an MOA reinstating signing bonus for lateral law enforcement officers only, so this is not for entry-level deputies. But the applicants I'm talking about who have prior law enforcement experience, so we can get them up and running much more quickly than sending someone to the academy and fully training them. So we've increased that amount. We used to have $15,000, but to be competitive, we believed we needed to raise it to $25,000. So we have this signed bonus and the executive's support to offer $25,000 for any lateral law enforcement officer who joins the King County Sheriff's Office. Makes us competitive, which I think is really important as we try to fill these vacancies. We also need to broaden our recruiting efforts. A variety of different things we can talk about if you'd like to, not today, but at another time when we have more time. Consistent consequences of holding people accountable, as we've talked about and we heard ATU talk about. So that's something we can do. Having this backstop for security, fair enforcement, and to keep our operators safe, those bus operators, that is a key to a healthy and safe system. People not following the law and being unsafe have to be held accountable. So the last thing I want to talk about is utilization of technologies. There's a lot of technology out there, and technology continues to evolve. Things that can help us get eyes on the problem more quickly that can lead to safer outcomes. So we are exploring some technologies, including data sharing, video analysis, drones or unmanned aerial systems, body-worn cameras, and in-car video cameras. So there's a number of technologies that I would, as you are contemplating resources and how we address some of this, I think using technology is extremely important. And, I'm sorry, one last thing I want to mention is that we have been successful in our emphasis work, and that is things such as along Third Avenue, which I'm sure you have seen some differences you come into the courthouse. And we will be starting what we call surge operations. These are in conjunction with the Seattle Police Department, where we will be making arrests, and we did on Third Avenue for drug dealing, weapons possession, and other violations. We've received positive community feedback from businesses in the area, but these surge operations will start later this week, and that will address 12th and Jackson and various areas along the transit lines. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Cole Tindall. And then next, I'd like to ask Deputy Director Arnold, Deputy CEO Arnold, sorry if I got your title wrong there, Russ, to speak a little bit about what's going on at Sound Transit. And I'm holding Director Ryder for last because I think you bring us hope for the future, so I would hold on to that for a moment. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Balducci. Good morning, council members. Thank you for inviting us to participate in this important conversation. I'm Russ Arnold, and I serve on the Sound Transit CEO Leadership Cabinet as the Deputy CEO for Service Delivery. So I'm here primarily to share our progress. I'm very cognizant of this discussion occurring in the wake of a horrific onboard tragedy, and I want to state as clearly as possible that safety for our passengers, operators, and broader community is our number-one priority at Sound Transit. We are approaching these issues on two parallel tracks that balance increasingly fast and effective incident response on one hand with preventative and education on the other. In terms of fast and effective security incident response, we are seeing strong results from the significant increase of security officers we've invested in over the past two years, as well as from our direct text messaging line where passengers can discreetly message us about any ongoing concerns they're having while in the system. We've set a bold internal goal that if a passenger messages us, leaving one station, a security guard will be able to board and address the issue by the time the train reaches the following station. We've rolled out, also, we're about to roll out an expanded educational campaign for passengers so they can utilize this text messaging tool, as we find they find the discreet ability to communicate. They take advantage of that more than maybe calling while they're in the middle of an incident. We've also seen general improvement in security incidences. Some of this can be attributed to ridership growth itself, improving security outcomes as having more eyes in the system is a well-known deterrent effect, as well as we have been focusing on station activation, increased lighting and cleanliness, de-escalation training, enhancements for our Fair Ambassador team, as well as comprehensive coordination with our partners. We also do want to credit some of this improvement to our successful and growing Fair Ambassador program. It does balance fair compliance with passenger education and focuses first and foremost on passenger service and de-escalation. We've begun to actually move that from on-train to piloting it on the platforms, coordinating with our security officers, as well as our partners at King County Sheriff's Office to ensure that all presence is there and that we can ensure that we address potential issues before they enter the system, where we have the most opportunity to respond to them in an effective manner. So as we continue to expand, so too will the number of law enforcement agencies with whom we will need to have solid partnerships. Our Lincoln sounder trains now serve eight of the nine King County Council districts you represent, and our partnerships with local law enforcement, especially with King County Sheriff's Office, will continue to be critically important for us addressing and improving the security environment of transit systems. Lastly, I'll say that we are investing strongly in data-informed resource prioritization so that we can be more forward-thinking and target resources and mitigations to specific issues and concerns at clear, specific facilities or routes. These efforts are beginning to bear fruit, but they're still in their infancy. I'll close by clearly stating our values to Sound Transit, again, safety for our passengers, operators, and the broader community is our number-one priority. And as has been already said many times this morning, we understand safety is a community endeavor. Sound Transit is committed through continual improvement of security on our system, regional coordination, and more to be positive, thoughtful, and collaborative members of the regional community in which we live and we serve. I'll close there, and I thank you for being allowed to be part of this conversation.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it is true that so much of this is about we wear different patches on our uniforms, but we're all working in it together, and that's true of Metro and Sound Transit. It is true of all of our various law enforcement agencies, and the more that we can make it seamless, what we heard from ATU and our operators is, I don't know that they care whose patch is on the shoulder when somebody responds. They want a response, and they want it fast. And so the more we can work together, the better we can meet that need. All right. Our last presenter for today, and then I'm sure there will be questions and comments from council, is from our Director of Community and Human Services, Kelly Ryder. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. Kelly Ryder, Director of the County's Department of Community and Human Services. Thank you for having me here today as part of the panel. I want to start by expressing my condolences to my colleagues with Metro and Mr. Yim's family and friends on the passing of Sean Yim. I will generally use this time to go over a few updates on DCHS's progress in expanding our behavioral health services and treatment. For an overview, our goal at DCHS is to create behavioral health treatment and services that are available, that are accessible, and that are effective, and underlying that, all of that is equitable. As you all have heard, DCHS declared many times through the passing and the implementation of the Crisis Care Centers Levy, when it comes specifically to responding to the needs of people in behavioral health crisis, our response is to create, first, someone to call, second, someone to respond, and third, a place to go. So for the purposes of today's discussion, I will focus primarily on our efforts to make sure that we have someone to respond. I think you said it very nicely just before this, Madam Chair, that having someone to respond, and to respond well, and to respond timely, absolutely must be our goal. And so to that end, DCHS, in partnership with the colleagues that you see here at this table, have created many opportunities through behavioral health outreach programs to make sure that we have people able to meet people where they are, on Metro, Sound Transit, and generally in and around downtown. These teams, which we collectively call our Behavioral Health Outreach Program, are providing de-escalation, resources, and support, and I will detail those teams here in a moment. I first want to provide a couple of opening comments to just kind of frame my role here in this panel. First, we know that due to historic disinvestment, primarily at the national level, but certainly here at the state level, especially in the wake of the Great Recession, that we have reduced the ability for us to access behavioral health treatment. It was exacerbated with the disconnection that happened during COVID, based on our public health guidance to make sure that people could isolate for their public safety and their public health, and that that has all been exacerbated by the opioid epidemic. In the context of all of that, it must be all of our responsibilities to make sure that we are prepared to respond to people in a that we are prepared to respond to people in a behavioral health crisis. Just like we all should know how to respond to the needs of a family member or a friend who might be having a heart attack or a broken bone, we all need to understand what we might do in the wake of a friend or colleague that is having a behavioral health crisis. I also want to share that we know not everyone riding on transit is homeless. Not everyone who is homeless or on transit is experiencing a behavioral health crisis. None of that, I want to be clear, should undermine the comments that you heard from the panel before, that there are very real challenges happening on Metro, and when that is intersecting with homelessness and behavioral health crisis, DCHS certainly wants to make sure that our systems are responsive and able to be a good partner. We also know that people who are homeless in particular don't have the luxury of experiencing their behavioral health crisis in private. They experience their behavioral health crises in public, and that shows up in Metro, it shows up on our streets, and it shows up in other places where we, as a public, have a role in responding and also a role in being able to navigate. It is in that context that I do also want to remind folks, people with behavioral health conditions are more likely to be the victims than the perpetrators. And so people with behavioral health conditions also have a stake in today's conversations in making sure that they too can be safe, both on our Metro buses, but also generally in the public. There is research that shows that it is any times, as much as 12 times likelihood, that people with behavioral health conditions are going to be a victim instead of a perpetrator. And so as we navigate today's conversation, I am very mindful of how we place stigma against people with behavioral health condition and the comments that I provide today. I want to be clear, our trying to be responsive to the needs of behavioral health conditions while also being cognizant of that context. So with that, as I mentioned, our Behavioral Health Outreach Programs come in three parts. First with Metro, second for City Hall Neighborhood Outreach, and third for Sound Transit. I will detail those and then do a little bit more overview of other behavioral health programs that we are implementing. So starting in 2021, in the wake of the COVID pandemic, DCHS, in partnership, created a new set of direct service teams to provide proactive outreach to individuals experiencing behavioral health challenges in and around the courthouse and on our transit systems. Together, our Behavioral Health Outreach Programs invest about $2.5 million per year in that type of outreach. Our King County Metro Safe Outreach Team, as you heard about described by other panelists, started primarily providing outreach at the Burean Transit Center in late December of 2022. The budget for that program is about $890,000 per year currently, and it operates seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. We have about 5.6 staff that participate in that program, and it is a mix of behavioral health professionals as well as peers with lived experience. And so as I think about the role of our Behavioral Health Outreach Program, I am also cognizant that these folks are not public safety leads. They are folks with experience in behavioral health challenges that can help to de-escalate conditions that may show up on our Metro routes. In 2024, between January and November, we had over 7,800 individuals that our King County Metro Safe Team did engagement with, or what we call outreach, and out of those, we had 129 individuals or episodes of de-escalation or crisis response. So that is a number of times that our team was able to participate in making sure that we could de-escalate something that was happening in and around a Metro site. I will say with that team and our Behavioral Health Outreach Program overall, one of the biggest needs that we see is for housing and shelter referrals. And so while we had 129 de-escalations, we had about twice that, 248 referrals to housing and shelter. We also were able to distribute Narcan 12 times and be able to use Narcan to prevent opioid overdose four times. As I mentioned, we have a similar program for the City Hall Neighborhood Outreach Program. Its geography is between Second and Sixth Avenue, from Yessler Way to James Street, and it includes outreach on Third Avenue between James and Cherry Street. It provides a combination, again, of mental health professionals and peers that provides crisis response and de-escalation to the area around City Hall Park, as well as the King County Courthouse. It started around the same time as our Metro program. Its budget is about $700,000, and right now, this is funded by our ARPA funds and is expected to expire and its funding at the end of 2025. So we are considering how to proceed with next steps in preparation for our '26, '27 budget proposals. This team had similar results in 2024, about 6,000 outreaches, 136 crisis de-escalation, again, 188 housing and shelter referrals, zero Narcan uses to prevent overdose, but we did distribute 24 Narcan access points. In terms of our Sound Transit Outreach Team, we outreach in and around a few station areas: Chinatown International District, Pioneer Square, Symphony, and Westlake Station, as well as on the trains within that area. This program operates Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and the budget is a little less than $1 million. For this, we have four FTEs, and again, very similar statistics, about 7,400 outreaches, 376 de-escalation and crisis response, 37 Narcan distributions occurred during that time, and three Narcan uses were able to reverse overdose symptoms. So that's a summary of our Behavioral Health Outreach Program. The other things that I want to cover, as Chair Balducci mentioned, to provide hope are the areas where we've really been changing our system the most, and that is for our mobile crisis team, for our designated crisis responders, and then lastly, for our ability to provide a place for people to go, as we say, in our crisis response overview. So for our mobile crisis team, as a result of the Crisis Care Centers Levy, we are able to invest an additional $3.5 million in expanding our mobile crisis teams. As opposed to our Behavioral Outreach Programs, which, as I mentioned, are proactively outreaching, our mobile crisis teams are reactively responding. These teams respond particularly to being dispatched from the Crisis Connections Dispatch Center. And in combination with our $3.5 million, as well as state funding, we now invest $22 million in our mobile crisis teams for a total of 27 teams, and that meant that we were able to launch 10 new teams in December to provide comprehensive geographic coverage. As a result of these new investments, we now have DESC providing access to mobile crisis in Central and Seattle Zone, as well as Sound Behavioral Health coming on as a new provider to provide specific access in Northeast and South King County. Because of our mobile crisis team, people in crisis can get 24/7 help from a specialized behavioral health team when and where they need it, reducing our hospital and jail visits. Given time, I'm going to go ahead and close up here, but I'm happy to provide more details. I do just want to give a quick update on our ability to provide a place to go. As I think many council members are tracking, this year, we opened our first geography, our place to go, in Kirkland, which provides 24/7 access for people with behavioral health crisis. We've also launched our Crisis Care Centers Request for Proposals to create our first of the five crisis care centers. This RFP was released in quarter three of 2024 with an expectation that we can announce a launch-ready site if selected, potentially as early as the end of this month. We also have received nine letters of interest to create additional crisis care centers, and we have operators that we may award for up to two more by the end of this spring. So we do expect this quarter to be a very busy quarter of progress. I will just say in closing, I am proud of King County for investing in much deeper behavioral health system investments than we have had in the last several years. I am committed to making sure that those investments that we have are implemented as quickly as possible to respond to the behavioral health crises that we have, both on our streets and in people's homes, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, everyone, for being here and for what you said. And now I'm going to open it up for discussion, starting with Councilmember Barone.
Thank you, Sheriff Balducci. Let me just say, first of all, thank you, Chair, for holding this conversation. And while I have the mic, I just want to express my condolences to the family of Sean Yim, and also my gratitude to President Woodville and to the folks from ATU for your earlier presentation, and I hope you will convey to your members the commitment that we have here to make sure that we address the issues and to listen to the voices of those most directly impacted your members on these issues, and just thank them for everything they do, even despite in these difficult circumstances, to get people like me, you know, here today and home this evening, and just continue to move the city and for the memorial that you held last Friday. So thank you. The question that I wanted to ask is, we heard a lot about data. We had a lot of data, but I was worried that we seem to have kind of competing information because we have some data that suggests that things are getting better, and yet we heard from ATU that their perception is that things are not getting better. And I'm very cognizant of the point that President Woodville made about the fact that people don't report things if they don't see action being taken, and so that might skew the data that we have. So I would just love a little bit of conversation about that, a reflection on that issue, and also in trying to address, Sheriff, to your point about the differences in comparing staffing levels for things like transit police, I'm trying to figure out what we can look to. And what I was thinking today is that I think what we all hope is that there is good, adequate response time, right? That when there is a situation that requires law enforcement response, that, you know, we have sufficient staffing to meet. And so I don't know if we have a goal within our sort of metro transit system that if an operator, you know, makes that call, that we have, you know, three minute, two minute, whatever the response, what is the goal for that? And I realize it's complicated because we're depending on other jurisdictions to do it, right? And so I would just like to know what, because it would help us as policymakers to try to decide, what is the level of investment that we need to make sure that we get that to whatever the goal is that we can agree to so that we can have that response? And of course, you know, it's going to be an average, but I'm just trying to figure out. You talk a little bit about that.
So they seem to be on a delay. If you tap it and wait a second, then it'll go on.
I got it. I got it. Thank you. So to your question, Councilmember, if we get a call, first of all, the way that it works is, we don't get a call directly from the transit operator. It goes through the Transit Communication Center, and then they are the ones that would call our, the King County Sheriff's Office Communication Center. So I don't know if there's some opportunity to figure out maybe some streamlining on that where there are critical incidents that maybe it can be, you know, a direct call to us. I don't know. That's something we need to talk about. But in terms of response, if we can get there in five minutes, but the problem is, the line is vast, and we have not a whole bunch of people, and certainly at night, to one of the points that ATU made, that at North Gate in the evening, we're not there. Well, we might not be there, and that's SPD, and SPD doesn't have the people either. So it, I appreciate the fact of a goal, yes, that would be great, but we do the best we can. And, but, yeah. It's, now, we can, like, if it's a priority one, something that's like, well, unfortunate what happened the other day, something like that, we're coming, you know, lights and sirens, and we're coming from all over, as are the other, you know, in that case, Seattle. But I think that's something I can work with my team on, but as these numbers get better and we have more people that are working in the evening, and I'll defer to the General Manager, she might have some more information.
Yeah, I think it's the, figuring out the capacity first is sort of the first place to start when it comes to response times. You need people to be able to respond, and that is absolutely the right area of focus for us, and then meeting those targets and goals of five minutes should be our work. And we're working internally with our Transit Control Center to also ensure that the communication to the operator is clear and consistent as well. I can only imagine how long five minutes really is and feels like when you're scared for your life. So that's a very real space, too. How do we continue to engage our Transit Control Center and have the right protocols for care and responsiveness is a discussion we always have together. And back to your question about data, this is a very active discussion inside of Metro, and we have security, safety and security folks that are detailed to each base, and what they do is they go and they sit and they talk and they train, and they, we have wellness events where we really encourage people to engage with us on what their experience is like, and we have trainings where we push out information. We create QR codes, and we allow operators to submit incident reports off shift at night, and we'll pay them for it, to really find ways to incentivize lowering the barrier and making it easier. We're not there yet. Some people are intimidated by technology, and they don't want to sit at a computer and fill in their information. That's the way that we have to do our incident reports. So how can we give them tools and confidence? Have someone say, just, I'll fill it in, you tell me what happened, right? So there's a lot of real engagement that needs to happen one-on-one with the operators to articulate the importance of the information and how we use it so that we can get confidence that them spending that five, six, seven minutes actually does mean something for our system. We are seeing that improve, but we aren't at the point where it's, you know, sort of this data is 100% accurate. We know that, but we do see the number of incident reports being submitted increasing, which is the right sign because it shows that people are using that system, right? And so there's that tension point. And I know our SSQ team, as we call it, our safety and security folks, they have their staff that are there engaging operators regularly. I was just there on Thursday, having conversations in safety committees, actively showing what happens when you have an incident report, what it looks like when you aggregate it, and what we see as a system as a whole, and then how we deploy services. So we make real their investment into the outcomes we want, and it's an ongoing effort for us, and we'll continue to be finding ways to lower the barrier for them, the burden for them, if you will, to get us the information that we so desperately need. The other part is to also continue to coordinate information with MTP, their information systems and our information systems. We need to get them into a more integrated space.
Thank you. Councilmembers, all, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all so much for your commitment to the safety of transit operators and riders. Earlier, when I asked, what is the most important safety feature that you're looking for, President Woodville mentioned the enclosed compartments for operators. Has there been a budget and feasibility analysis conducted on that specific request? And if so, is it available for our review?
There has been a lot of work on this, and I think ATU would join me in saying that we have had a lot of history of starting and stopping this conversation. About 10 years ago, when we first started it as an organization, there was not internal alignment with our partners at ATU on an operator shield. One of the elements of becoming a bus operator that people so love is customer service. Many of our bus operators want engagement with and feel empowered by a communication with their riders that they build relationships with over time. We're in a very different place right now. COVID was one impetus that moved the needle, and now with our public safety conversation that we're having, there's more urgency just to ask and answer that question. We are moving to operator partitions. Now, what partitions are there that meet our needs? We have done a comprehensive analysis over the past year, and we can send that information to this group to articulate. There's not a lot out there that meets exactly what we want. We want to make sure the ergonomics of opening and closing, that the barrier goes all the way to the windshield, that it feels not too claustrophobic for people, and that there's still the ability to say hello. There's ADA requirements with our front door boarding so that wheelchairs can still get on the infrastructure. Those are elements that we're considering. So there are two prototypes that meet most of those needs, not all of those needs, but most of them. And so we've been engaged with the vendors. We have those two prototypes on our system. We know that in the long term, we may be having to do some retrofitting. We have some incredibly talented people at CSC that can help us out with that. And just in general, the transit industry across the country is having this exact conversation. So also working with our OEMs to make something standard for new bus builds. So we are working to understand what lead time would look like on the preferred alternative when ATU and Metro land on that final decision. We know we have some deadlines in the next couple of months to be able to do that definitively so we can give those specs to our Gilig manufacturer for the next round of new coaches, and then we can also start working to onboard the materials needed for our existing fleet. So I don't have the exact outline at the moment because it is still being developed with the vendors on what they have available, but I will say this, we will make resources available, whether this is a conversation we go have with the state, whether we also articulate in our '26, '27 budget. This is not something we're slowing down. This is something we are going to prioritize, and we will deprioritize something else to make that investment happen.
Thank you so much, General Manager.
Councilmember Dan Bauschel.
Thank you, Sheriff Balducci, and thank you to the panelists who are here today and presenting. Sheriff Cole Tindall, I want to say that I listened to the radio traffic of the incident that responded to Operator Yim's killing, and the coordination with our sheriff's deputies and Seattle Police Department was incredible. and Seattle Police Department was incredible. It was, I just thought really evidence of the finest hour and the finest first responders that we have. And I know that while they didn't capture the killer that night, the groundwork that was laid there that you could hear, the police work being done real time to capture video from area cameras, to do tracking, to collect witness identification, it was really, really impressive. And so I wanted to just take this opportunity to commend you, your deputies and your partners for their response to the incident. It really was something else. Director, GM Allison, you've got your hands full here. Our colleague, Councilmember Von Reichbauer, often talks about the Nordstrom quality of service and that the customer is always right. And I'm going to return to the data dashboard since we've been talking a little bit about data. And this is from your dashboard now, but with respect to customer safety satisfaction, you know this, but I think it's worth sharing here in the dialogue, only according to your data here, 15.47% of our riders, according to your last survey, were very satisfied with respect to safety while onboard our system, 15 and a half percent. Only 22% were somewhat satisfied and the rest, not satisfied. So our riders are telling us, we're not delivering. We're not delivering on safety. They are cementing and reaffirming what our ATU partners are saying. So I think that the identification of the problem is pretty clear. We've got some work to do here. And I agree, colleagues, with the statement that our challenges in the public generally with respect to public safety, mental health, behavioral health issues, our system isn't immune from them. But we also don't allow other systems to take on those problems and expect it to occur. We heard from flight attendants today, Ms. George, we don't allow that on air transport. Frankly, Amtrak doesn't allow it. We've somehow gotten into a little bit of a space where it's almost accepted that it's going to occur on transit. And I think we got to have a conversation where we reset those expectations and say, no, it is not. Okay. We are going to have Kelly Ryder and DCHS, you know, continue their work on responding to houselessness, responding to behavioral health, but I don't think the answer can be, well, it's occurring in community, so of course naturally it will occur on transit. I think the answer's got to be a little bit different. It's occurring in community, we're going to respond in community, but we don't have to set expectations where it's going to occur on transit. I think part of that response too is empowering our riders to be more partners, that some folks talked about that. I'll return to BART, the Bay Area Rapid Transit System. They employ an app called BART Watch and it looks like this app provider is, provides services to a number of transit agencies around the country. I know when we ride, you know, I heard it today, our sound transit system, the voice comes on if you see something, report it to this phone number. It's a little abstract, what was that phone number? Where do I find it? I know on Metro we have the placards, but I'm going to encourage us to look at these app providers that empowers riders to give some specificity. Is it smoking or drug use? Is it disruptive behavior? Is there a crime in progress? Is it human trafficking that you're seeing? Is it a welfare check? Is it unwanted sexual harassment, lewd behavior? This is a pretty interesting app that empowers our riders to be a partner and support this work and I think it could be helpful and maybe it could be deployed if it works relatively quickly, we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, I'm glad to hear that we've reinstated the hiring bonuses. I don't think those should have been taken off the table. You've had some success, better sheriff than other departments around the region in recruiting and retention because frankly, the sheriff's office is a good place to work. We run a pretty darn good department, but I think we should do that. I guess a question, you know, I've visited my son here recently a couple of times in New York City and they've had some challenges on their subway system with public safety and the public has, you know, spoken out. They have what I've observed is uniformed officers riding the system, on the system. And historically, our rapid ride system, one of its features in addition to off-board payment and frequency of service was enhanced security. That was kind of one of the pillars. Do our uniformed deputies actually get off, you know, get out of the cars and ride the system, ride the buses? I don't, I haven't seen that as much, but I'm seeing some nods behind you and is that something we should do?
They actually do and I actually had the opportunity to work patrol a few months back and we rode. We rode from the south all the way into the city. So that was sound transit. But yes, they do actually get on the buses, they get on the trains, the light rail, heavy rail. So we would like to see more of that as we have more, but that is part of the strategy. And one thing I didn't mention, and I just want to get in here really quickly, is with that Operation Safe Transit where I said we were booking people, we were holding people accountable or booking them, I'll say that, the rest of the system I can't speak to. We had just shy of 400 arrests from May 1st. So I do feel like the, at least 400 people, some of those are multiple, same person, but we have had just shy of 400 arrests.
Good. And we've finally, a little discussion about our behavioral health response. Metro has launched an initiative to deploy this capacity in our system. In North King County, the council launched a few years ago, what's now called the Regional Crisis Response System. It's a co-responder model. I did a ride along with them in Shoreline a couple of months ago. We stopped and talked with one of your deputies at the park and ride lot there and what we learned in that discussion was right now at least, there isn't connectivity between the regional crisis response, Shoreline Police, which is staffed by the sheriff's office, and our kind of metro police system. And you talked Sheriff Colton Tindall about communications and integrating those. I would just say that at least where we have deployed resources in the behavioral health space in the north end, you might try this as a pilot, maybe there isn't a need to reinvent that. We could bring that resource online by integrating the communications and make sure that they can, they can respond and provide the help where needed.
Thank you for that, Councilmember, and I will bring that back to our team that coordinates partnerships across the region and add them as a stakeholder so they can join our regional conversation. I just want to speak to your customer survey data and information. I don't want to leave the impression that for one second, Metro isn't going to work hard and harder to continue to bring up the level of service and the quality of service that we're providing the riding public. That is our job. That is my job. There is, the more service we have, it has to be accompanied with the experience that people expect in order for us to sustain and grow a healthy transit system. What we also know is every functioning city has a well-functioning transit system and part of that is people's experience. And safety is often a lead indicator to your experience. So you are right, raising the bar of what expected behavior is on our system is a priority for us. It's a priority for us in partnership with Metro Transit Police as well as our contractors with transit security officers, empowering them to remove people who are providing disruptive behavior, to empowering our operators to have a place to go to report about their incidents and providing support and training for them so they're empowered. All of these aspects have to work together in order for us to have the system that we want. So I want to just speak very clearly, I'm clear-eyed about the problem in front of us and I recognize Metro's role in it and I appreciate the partnership with others that we need in order to achieve the system that we want. We are the seventh largest transit system in the United States. We do big, bold things every single day. We have solved problems and challenges time and time again. We're the first in a lot of things. We are going to address this head-on.
I really appreciate that. And if I might, in terms of kind of a wrap-up for my dialogue here, we had a number of briefings in the Transportation Economy and Environment Committee that I chair about safety and I know that your commitment on that is, to improving it is good. And I will say again, most of our system for the, I think, vast majority of routes and riders and experiences, it's safe. I use it, the experience is, is good. We are the fastest recovering system in the country with respect to transit users. So people want to use it and they're coming to use it, but it can be safer. We've had some colleague discussion about dollars and I want to be really clear, this is not a money issue. We have the resources at Metro and we have the capacity to further fund Metro through our Transportation Benefit District Existing Authority, 10th of a penny sales tax if we need it. I want to be really clear, dollars will not get in the way, at least from my perspective, of making the investments we need in the system's safety and security. And I think, I don't think anyone here, either on the exec side or the council side would disagree. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. And I believe Councilmember Barone has one follow-up question.
Just a quick follow-up.
More, I'm not trying to limit you, please.
No, it's okay. General Manager Allison, I wanted to ask you about the TSOs and about the, what the sort of plan for deploying them. So first of all, I want to confirm that all 160 are staffed so that we don't have vacancies on that area. And the, and the second question is just the concept of where they are deployed and the timing, because I noticed in the staff report that, you know, they're deployed to like particular routes because those are, and it makes sense, right, deploying them. But on the other hand, if we're trying to sort of deter behavior, there's also the argument for like people who don't, you know, people who are on the other routes will not see the TSOs and so the deterrence factor will be missing from those routes. So could you talk a little bit about how you're thinking about that, needs to perhaps deploy more? I mean, I know the challenges that we have with law enforcement hiring and so what's the balance of those two kind of response systems as we, as we look ahead?
Great question. And we are currently at 170 transit security officers that is split between two contracts that we have. We also have extended overtime at those contracts to get to more times of day. We all know that the night is the hardest part, so we really wanted to get into the 3:00 AM time. So we have overtime right now for that and we need to revisit what our deployment schedule looks like from a time of day perspective moving forward as well. So very good question. And we are using data right now that says the number of incidents, both reported from customers and our operators, is here. And then we put it on a map and you can see the lines are, as Mary noted in her report, and they're, those have historically been challenging parts for our system. So we are deploying folks in those spaces. I was at a South Bay Safety Committee meeting this last week and I was asking them a question. When you see security officers, what's your experience? Are they doing what we expect of them to do? And they used Berian as a really good example of what is happening well, where the coach comes into that transit center, the security officer, you're good, and gets onboard, walks the whole length of the coach, gets off. That's not always the experience, but that's always the expectation, that our security officers provide that level of service. So we constantly, constantly need to hear where that is and isn't happening so we can encourage our security officers to follow the expectation of their contract. They said also, at the security meeting, they mentioned something very similar to what you just noted, that sometimes there's a really informed network of folks who are using our system and they're talking to each other. Security just got on this coach, don't get on this coach, hop on the next one, that there's some communication happening with certain groups of individuals that may be using our system for purposes other than getting to their transit destination, that could also be sharing information in ways that could make it less effective for that transit security officer on that route. So your note of maybe sort of spot checking, if you will, and redeploying in different spaces to show that broad presence is something I think that's worth considering.
Thank you. I would like to now call on myself to ask just two questions, one comment, and then I will wrap us up for today. First question, and I think this was asked, but I just want to be really clear, I would love if it were possible for us to allow operators, or at least Metro and Sound Transit Dispatch, to directly call the crisis response teams, because I feel like that is a, that is a growing resource that we have, to the point that we heard earlier that, you know, our, our operators are not trained mental health professionals, but boy, wouldn't it be great if they had access to trained mental health professionals for the right circumstances? So that's just, maybe that's more of a statement than a question as well. I would love to think about how we can make that available more directly. The second question is, a number of times today, the issue of bookings into the jail has come up and I know we have Steve Larson from DAJD here and I would just love to give him an opportunity to say a few words about what is currently going on at the jails and what, what, what might be able to be done there. Welcome, Mr. Larson. I've lost track of your title. Could you please introduce yourself? Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Steve Larson. I'm the Deputy Director for DAJD and I appreciate the opportunity. I think most of what I have to say, Sheriff Colton Tindall described very well when it comes to what DAJD is, is doing. We have partnered with the sheriff's office since May of last year on Operation Safe Transit and as far as I know, we have not refused any bookings brought our way. And I think I heard Sheriff Colton Tindall say about 400-plus arrests, not all of those arrests result in bookings to the jail, but again, we have accepted everyone that's been brought to us. In addition to a number of the specialty kinds of operations that the sheriff office has conducted over the last year, I think I heard somebody indicate too, that the booking restrictions have been lifted for the city of Seattle. That occurred in November. We haven't seen a huge uptick in bookings at this point, but again, continue to partner with the city of Seattle and we believe we're close to be able to lift booking restrictions across the board for the rest of our city partners in King County. So again, we want to do our part in the system to receive people. DAJD doesn't decide who comes to us or how long they stay with us, but we certainly will take them when we can and we'll do our part for the, the system. So thank you for the opportunity to comment, Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Director. All right. Final comment before I then wrap us up is I think that one of the key things that is going to be needed to improve in order for us to do better across all of the spectrum of what we've been talking about today is to work on our collaboration with all of the law enforcement partners. And good news, it's something that law enforcement actually does very well. The history of mutual aid among all of our police departments and our sheriff's department here in King County is quite, it's quite remarkable to me because typically when you have some kind of inter-jurisdictional partnership, you have to negotiate a deal, you have to write out an MOU, sometimes money changes hands, it's a big deal. Law enforcement has this cultural of mutual aid where they just do it and they have procedures and policies because they've developed them over time, but it's really very much an ethic. It's an ethic of when we have a really big response going on in our community, law enforcement will sag in from other communities and then people will support them in turn. And it just, it's, it's a thing that they do. And so I know that we can build that for transit as well. And I want to call out just a couple of good examples that I've seen recently. Sheriff, you talked about one of them and that was KCSo supporting the Seattle Police Department on that Third Avenue emphasis, which really has made a visible difference. I was skeptical at first, but Bellevue funding its own transit unit in the Bellevue Police Department has turned out to be a very positive development and it gives more focus in that city when there are issues on the light rail, which has really dramatically increased the amount of transit going on there. Just the idea that public safety is transit safety. If there's a bus with people on it in Auburn and there's a problem, transit police from King County and Auburn Police have a common interest in solving that or preventing it even better. So that's one thing, that's just my final comment here. I think that when we get together and have that regional discussion, that's got to be a big part of it, is how do we all support each other to make, because again, I'm a rider, I don't care which agency you're from, I care that somebody shows up and helps me. And so that's, I think we can, we can build toward that. All right. So in conclusion, I want to thank everyone who came today, especially our leaders who sat there on the hot seat for a long time and very much especially our ATU leaders who came and shared important information that we need to hear, a challenge that we need to hear, and that challenge is, okay, leaders of King County, what are you prepared to do? We need you to take action. And I think what I would like to close on is I've heard a long list of ideas from, from the public, from our, our employees, from some of my colleagues, and I think we need to start building that into an action plan from here. I know there are action plans and we are building the action plan from here and we need to focus on things we can do right now. Some things are going to take longer than others. Things we can do right now, because that's what will build confidence in our employees and in the public that we can make change. And some of the things I heard, emphasis works. Emphasis is something we can do and are doing. We should do more emphasis and do it quite publicly and that means surging is another word that's been used, response and security to places where we need to so that there's, you send the message, we're resetting. I think something about, and I don't want to be unfair to the operation because I know that in, even in a lengthy hearing like this, we are getting this much of what you all are discussing and doing in-house. So please take this as just a thought that I had for further discussion. The idea that when, we've heard so much about the experience of our drivers, not just that they are at grave physical risk, which they are, but also the way they get treated, slapped, spit at, threatened. If we could create an ethic of, number one, that is not okay and we are going to respond and do something about it and send the message that that's not okay. about it and send the message that that's not okay. And two, when our operators are subject to that, that kind of behavior, I'm hearing that they feel that they then become under a microscope. And what they should feel is that they're being surrounded by support. So how can we do that? How can we change that feeling to one of, when I have this thing happen that is like, true, I come in this courthouse, I walk through security, I go into my secure office and nobody spits at me. I would love to have somebody come around if that happened and say, we're going to help you. So how can we change that dynamic, I think is something well worth considering quickly. I heard a lot about training and de-escalation. That might be something that can be done a little relatively quickly. Certainly convening the regional task force that ATU has been talking about. And I heard my colleague, Councilmember Dunn, suggest he is working on some regulatory encouragement, as I like to call it, to get us to do so. So let's encourage that and work with that. And then, you know, improving data collection, there's got to be ways we can do that. I totally get data fatigue. Nobody's going to help me, so why should I bother to report it? Sending the message that we are going to do something will help people to know that reporting matters. And then we can get better data, which will inform better responses. And I heard something, I think possibly about a financial policy, colleagues, that we might think about here because we adopt the financial policies for King County. Financial policy about when we invest in new service, that includes operational costs and operational costs include security. And so things we could do relatively quickly to show that we're, we're focused and making a difference while we continue to work on the longer-term, harder things. And then finally, I want to just encourage all my colleagues on this council that keeping focus, following up, keeping the, our voices up so that people can hear that we're taking action, that's going to be very important. So we haven't done our reorganization for this year yet. We will shortly. Whatever the committees are, we should find a place to have a regular public discussion about how we are, how we are proceeding, how we are delivering so that people can hear us doing it and we are being, holding ourselves a little bit accountable to, to making progress and making sure that we are doing everything in our power so that this never happens again. All right. I think we have had a very substantive, meaningful discussion. So much more to do. Thank you all. Thank you all. And that is the only agenda item we have for today. So bringing it to a close, we are now adjourned. Thank you all so much.